Good evening, welcome to the October 9th meeting of the River Falls Common Council. At this time, I'd like to ask everybody please to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The clerk, please call the roll.
Here Sid.
Here.
Here.
Gagne.
Here.
Morsette.
Here.
Odean.
Here.
Page.
Here.
Watson.
Here.
All right, next we'll move on to the approval of the minutes from the September 25th regular meeting and the September 25th workshop.
I move approval of the minutes from September 25th.
Second.
All right, we have a first and a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, next we'll have bills with me. I move approval of the bills in the amount of $784,467.90, subject to the comptroller.
Second.
I have a first and a second, anybody have any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nope, okay, motion passes. Public comment, anybody here that has any public comment before the council on anything on the agenda or not on the agenda? Anyone at all? Looks like we don't have anybody, so we're gonna move on to the report from the bid board, and we have Ms. Jolene Larson here today to give us a report, so I'll turn it over to Jolene.
Good evening, everyone. I'll do as told, doesn't happen very often. I want to thank you all for inviting us again this year and for your consideration. We are here before you, asking once again for our 2019 assessment. We've been, we're quite excited actually, that there was actually discussion about the bid recently. We find that fun, because either we must be doing something, which is good. It's always good news to be on the screen, so we thank you for that. First, I want to start with a little bit of historic perspective of how we started. I think that was one of the questions that Julie kind of fielded, but in 1988, a large group of business, property owners and business owners and city staff got together, they all got on a bus, and they headed to Red Wing, Minnesota for a retreat. It was the beginning of the bid, Wisconsin bid, state bid project, and they were looking at it, and their concern was actually failing businesses, a loss of small businesses downtown, and the lack of Main Street vitality. I don't know how many of you were here in 1988, I've been here quite a while. In 1967, we kind of peaked, and then we kind of hit a skid. The Wisconsin Main Street program was just developing, and so they thought it would be a good time to look at that project and amongst other projects. And they decided to go out of town, where they could be alone for the day, and just talk about it. It was a pretty vigorous discussion, let's put it that way, and with a lot of going back and forth, and it wasn't well received in the beginning, because it is a tax, they decided to proceed. And with much discussion, the bid district was developed by the businesses, business owners voted on it, and then it was proceeded and went to the council, and then the council went to the state, made application, and then the application approved us, and we were one of the first five in the state of Wisconsin, to be a Wisconsin business community, bid community. So what did that mean? The Wisconsin bid, at that time, had some rules. First one was that you had to have a 40-hour, full-time, position-paid staff person. So we hired a staff person, we rented an office, we got office furniture, we got a sign, and we were in business. There were four areas that we needed to work on, and quite frankly, I can't remember the four areas, and maybe that's why we never did very well in that, in those categories, because we did really well in public relations and marketing. We found ourselves always stepping on the toes of the River Falls Chamber. We are very fortunate to have a very strong River Falls Chamber, and what we were doing in the marketing area was really redundant with what the Chamber did, because you only, the city only needs so many events. So then, we also did well in hosting some events and classes, we found those were also redundant, and the business owners, while attendance was good in the beginning, that started going by the wayside as well. In the first eight years of the bid, we collected our assessment, we also got about $20,000 extra, some of it came from the city, about 10,000 or 12,000, I can't remember exactly, and we got money from the Pierce County EDC and the St. Croix EDC. In the first eight years, or the first 10 years, we took $10,000 of that each year, and we did sign grants. There was no facade grants, it was only sign grants. We put $10,000 each year in a CD for future big, large projects, and then the rest of the money paid for staff and rent and other various projects that we did. There were no hanging baskets at that time. We did do the limestone planters on Main Street, so when you look at those limestone planters, they're actually, were built by our Main Street bid board executive at the time, Roald Evenson. We also did an Earth Day event, where we planted, physically planted most of the trees on Second Street and the ones along Holiday. We did the first duck race, the Kinney Fest, I don't know how many of you remember that, but I have a T-shirt that's probably valuable now, from 1990, with a big duck on it. We sponsored, hosted several Kansas City chief events, and we developed the River Dazzle, which is still alive today. At that time, we outlined the Main Street with, silhouetted with lights, and those were beautiful until we had a major hailstorm and lost them all. That cost about $30,000 to do, so we decided not to redo it. And then we also had, at that time, fireworks over the Lake George, but it's grown up so much now with foliage, that it's not safe to do so. So in 2000, our director resigned, and we had an issue of, we were originally called Main Street 2000, so that was kind of, the plan was, okay, do we continue it, or do we stop it, or what do we do? And so we surveyed our constituents, and with guidance, we developed what you now see before us as the bid. We decided to relinquish our Wisconsin Main Street designation, which meant we had to give back the purple signs, and we no longer had a full-time staff, and we didn't think that was too out of line. We became an all-volunteer board, and we're a working board, and our only, our only goal is that, that we think that it's the property owner's money and the business owner's money that we should give back to them to use help, to use, to help ensure the vitality of the historic district, and to help fund beautification projects in their district. We have definite boundaries in our district, we don't spend money outside those boundaries, so all the monies that we collect go back to that constituency. Unlike other tax dollars that might go to Hoffman Park that are collected from somebody over here, all our money stays in that area. So I'd like to examine the current bid assessment for a minute and break it down for you, because I don't know how many of you have really looked at the roll, and how much money is there, and where it all comes from. We have about 44,500 in total assessments out of 96 properties. Of that money, six property owners pay $21,041.21. So if you take the 44.5 and less the 21.04, you get about $23,489 left by the 90 parcels, and if you divide that out, it comes out to about $260 per parcel. So for less than a dollar a day, they're getting pretty good value for their money. You can drill it down one step further, or actually, several steps further if you want to, but the next category we divided up to is $500 to 921. So the first 10, nine people that, or six people that we talk about, go from $921 to $7,685 is what they pay in their assessment. The second category are folks that pay $500 to $921, and there are 10 of these folks, for a total of $4,976. So the average assessment is about $231 a year. Now we have people who pay less than that, we have people that pay $56. We actually have some non-taxpaying properties, so they pay nothing, but it's pretty good value for the dollar. So I'd like to talk about what we've done relatively in the last several years, and where we're headed for 2019. The assumption is that we all are agreement that maintaining the vitality of Main Street is in everybody's economic interest. The reason why we do grants for facade projects is because no matter what businesses in that project, they really aren't going to the businesses, they're going to the buildings. We don't invest in any infrastructure, we only invest in the infrastructure, brick and mortar. We don't give them inventory, we, other than their sign, we were doing just building grants. And the reason why we do that is because long after those businesses go, those buildings are still going to be there. It doesn't really matter. We have had several businesses that haven't made it, unfortunately. Yojo's would be a good example. She didn't make it, we don't, can't figure out why she didn't make it. We invested in her sign, so yes, that money was not the best probably well spent, but we also invested in the front of that building, and the front of the building is still there no matter who, what business is in it. So that's kind of our premise of why we invest in the buildings. So for 2019, we have an assessment of 44.5. Our assessment has not gone up since we started. The only way our budget increases is if the property values increase, which we can hope, which is good for everybody, or if we have another big project downtown within our district. So our operating expenses are about $4,160, and out of that, $2,500 is a city administration fee. And we pay that because we have a city staff person that comes to each one of our meetings and keeps us in line and does our postings, and makes sure that I'm correct, and keeps me in tow. And then we also have mailings and that kind of thing that go out from the city. So we pay that, because that's what we probably should pay. We also have some liability insurance for ourselves, and we have some miscellaneous postage website, we have a website that we have to pay for and those kind of things. And then we go down to our special projects. It has been, it has been noted that there is a group, a group think that perhaps we should do all beautification projects, and then there's a thought that maybe we should do all facade projects, and what we tried to do is kind of find a happy medium. We are pretty, if you want to say lopsided, it's not split down the middle, we're pretty lopsided in the beautification projects. We have, first, the Main Street flowers and hanging baskets. We now have 62 baskets, we added 12 more to the Division Street Bridge. So we have baskets on Maple Street, Division Street, and all of Main Street. We plant those, the cost of those baskets have not gone up since we started that project. The growers still charge us the same amount of money. I don't ask, and they don't ask either, we just, we just write them the same check every year. And then, we have, we use the three local growers. The city hangs them for us, and the city now waters them for us, because everybody's getting kind of old and can't do that any longer. But we bought these huge reservoir baskets, they only need to be watered twice a year, or twice a, wish it was twice a year, twice a week. Our next project, we spent about $7,700 on that project now. It's gotten, this is probably the last set of baskets that we're gonna probably take on. The reason why we did Division Street Bridge is we heard from our constituency in the north, that there wasn't a lot of, no, there were businesses down there that people might not see. It's hard to do it, and we don't have, you know, we're waiting for the wayfinding project, because then there's gonna be signs directing them to those businesses. But right now, there's not much we can do, so we thought, well, we can hang some baskets, and that will lead people down to the new pathway and to those businesses, hopefully. We also do the Second Street Gardens. We just had a little gathering for the gardeners, they're all volunteer gardeners, I can't remember how many there are, I think there are 27 gardens. And to say goodbye for Sandy Bowen, because she's going to continue to garden, but she's not going to be our fearless leader. So we were talking about how that project started, and actually, it didn't really start with Main Street. It was just, the city had done some road construction on Second Street, and there were two or three corners that the grass just wouldn't take, and the property owners on those corners decided to plant plants. One of them was the Ezekiel Lutheran Church. And it started looking so good, that our director at that time said, hey, why don't we do this to all the corners? And that's where, how we got today. So we've got gardens at the triangle, by St. Bridgetts, all the way down Second Street, and it does make a difference, people do talk about it. And it's, it's a great segue to the Cascade project, because Cascade is absolutely gorgeous now, and if you go a little further and walk along the campus, this is my two-minute shout out to the campus, they've done a wonderful job with planting there, it's like a mini arboretum. So I encourage everybody to walk that Second Street strip and Main Street and all the path mark, pathway, the white pathway, and then do, stop at the university. We spent about $1,500 on those gardens, it's plants and a lot of plant material, but all the time that's spent on them is volunteer. We also spend money on Main Street benches and trash bins. We have, this year, we've had, put $2,400 aside, we haven't spent it, so that'll roll into the $2,400 next year. We haven't spent it, because we're trying to figure out where we want to put them on the new trail, because that would be our, part of our project. And we're still kind of working out where they should go. $2,400 sounds like a lot, that will buy us a couple items, maybe a bench and a, and a trash can, they're about $1,100 apiece. We also buy smokers for Main Street, that is a program that we bring to the businesses, what those are, those little receptacles for cigarette butts. We buy them, the city installs them, and the agreement is the businesses will up, keep, keep them up in front of their businesses. We've done that after we had a survey, I think, here through the council, I think I was on the council at the time, talking about the problem with littering and cigarette butts on Main Street. So we keep that program as well. We sponsor the River Dazzle Parade and the River Dazzle Event. Instead of us doing the work, because we really can't do that, we go with the Chamber of Commerce, and they put it on, and then we help underwrite the costs, and we spent about $6,000 on that event. We do murals and banners. This year, we finished a mural of Doc Mack on the, by the subway there, which is kind of fun, and we're hoping next spring to do a mural underneath the bridge over here with the high school. We're hoping that that might stop any graffiti activity, that kind of thing, and then we're working on a few other projects. We also put money towards the wayfinding sign program, the development of the waysigning program, and we also are setting aside the, I think it's $8,500 or $8,700 that is going to be our share of the wayfinding signs. And so we will be paying for our signs in the Main Street bid board. So total, for next year, we have about $31,550 on special projects that are going to be money set aside. We're also putting aside $2,500 every year for what we're, we've tagged, because for want of a better name, large Main Street projects. What we're hoping to do with that is find a sound system to run down Main Street, so we can pipe in music all year long, whether it be the car cruise, Christmas, whatever it is. We aren't going to do that project until we look at Main Street and see what, what's gonna happen with that in a few years. And we understand that's down the road, but it is coming. We want to have enough money at that time, we're not gonna do it now, because it's really hard to wire it with the, the current way that Main Street is made, and we're not sure if wireless technology will really work. So that's kind of our goal with that. So we, that leaves us with about $9,000 left for facade and grant projects, but in 2019, we're not foreseeing any major projects. This year, we did Mickey at the theater, they're, they're part of her front, and then we also did at her building, and then we also did some new signage for her second building. We did Juniors. Instead of looking behind the hotel and seeing that, all that stuff, that, you know, that was just a containment pond, you now see a beautiful structure, and whether Juniors is there or not, that patio can be used for the hotel for years to come. We did several signs, Mimi's Cookies, we granted a couple others, and so we've been just busy working downtown. And since the 2000, I believe I did the math, and we've, we've spent about $801,000 in downtown River Falls, all within our budget, our, our little district. So I think it's pretty well spent. In closing, I want to thank the city staff for all their help. I especially thank Amy, who comes to our meetings, they must just shake her head, because to keep us on track. And Mike and the city crew, they've been great this year, they've been really helpful, and have really helped us a lot with hanging the baskets and the gardens. And I want to also thank all of you for your support and your consideration tonight. With that, if there's any questions?
Jolene, I've got a quick question.
Mm-hmm.
Could you just run through, I'm gonna put you on the spot now, the, the board members that represent the different, that are, that are kind of guiding the?
Sure, there's myself, because nobody will let me quit. I gotta, I gotta look at the table here. Terry McKay, Mike Miller, who owns the treasures from the Hart Building, Lori from Lori's Day Spa, Lori Moran, who owns the, her building. The chamber has a seat at the table. Mike, I can't think of his last name.
Pepin.
Pepin, thank you. Amy Hawerson, who owns a number of buildings. And from the state bank, we have Carrie Olson, and we usually have one banker person to keep us in line. And the state bank is also a major.
Yep.
Major part. So we do, we will do, well, we will have openings next year, as always, and we still can add a couple more people to the board if anybody wants to.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions for Jolene? We do have an action item coming up next, but is there anything that anybody would like to ask Jolene? Oh, Mr. Downing?
You talked about large Main Street projects, is there anything else in discussion for the projected year that you could tell us about tonight?
This year?
Yeah.
Um, well, the mural project will be a huge, that's, you know, that's like five grand. The only other thing, we don't know of any big projects, the hotel might be doing some things, but we haven't really heard any big, major, huge plans, other than just our usual, you know, programs that we're doing. So we don't have anything in the horizon that's huge.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Thank you, Jolene.
You're welcome.
Appreciate your time and your efforts that you put into that. Okay, we will move on from public comment and reports to the public hearing, so we will close the council meeting and open up a public hearing for a resolution authorizing special assessment police powers under section 66.0703 of Wisconsin statutes for the benefit of the River Falls Business Improvement District. Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to speak to this public hearing section? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing and reopen the city council meeting, and I will entertain a motion if somebody would so like to do that.
Sir, Council President, I move for the approval of number three, resolution authorizing special assessment police powers of the Business Improvement District.
Second.
All right, we have a first and a second. Any discussion?
I do.
Mr. Gagne, go ahead.
I'll just kind of reiterate what I had to say last time at this, on this topic. Jolene, I appreciate everything that you and the bid board does downtown, and everything looks great down there. Between the projects that you have coming up with the murals and getting rid of, rid of the graffiti, I'm 100% behind all the projects you've done, the beautification and the gardens and all the other work, and I haven't heard anybody say anything negative about the beautification projects. The biggest thing that I would reiterate is, some of the folks aren't necessarily in favor of taking their money and putting it into another business, when they necessarily have to take that money and put it into their own, right? They're already being taxed on sales tax, property tax, they have all of these other things that go into it, whether they're the building owner or not, and then they get taxed on top of that, a special assessment, although it might be $200, $500, $7,000, $21,000, whatever these amounts might be, it's still added money that is coming out of their business that is being spent elsewhere. So that's the biggest concern that I hear from folks. And 1988 was the last time that an official assessment was done by business owners. I guess my point would be, anytime we're taxing somebody, it's a great idea to go back to them and make sure that we're reassessing that and getting the favor. You'll probably have overwhelming support, but at least it puts it back into perspective of what kind of support you have for the bid board. You know, we can do all the great things in the world, and we can say everybody's behind it and everybody's supporting it, but if you don't assess those folks again, in an independent, anonymous fashion, you're not necessarily gonna get 100% of the people voting the way they really would. It's just like when we go to the, the election table here in November, if everybody was publicly chastised for how they voted, people would probably be swayed in how they voted, right? I guess that's the point I make. If we step out, give each business owner a ballot and say, here's your ballot, bring it back, send it in, however you'd like to do it, there it is, you get to vote. And I would recommend doing that again in the future. With that, I did vote in favor of it.
I am, I did notice in the, in the last bid board packet that we got, that there was a discussion of a survey on the agenda, so I assume that, I assume that the bid board had heard that concern and has been moving forward with that. Jolene shaking her head, yes, so I assume that's, that's progressing. Okay. Any other comments or concerns or questions?
I'll just have a quick comment, I think this is a great example of, of a tax that benefits those, directly benefits those who pay it. I moved here in 1992, and downtown was still pretty shabby then, and there were some fake fronts on, on buildings, and the whole place just looked so much more welcoming and attractive, and like a place that takes itself seriously. So, and I know much of that is directly from the work that the bid board does, so thank you very much.
Anyone else? Okay, we've got a first and a second on the table, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries, we will move on to the consent agenda. Item four is resolution approving, I'm sorry, resolution regarding agreement with the counties for the 2019 shared taxi ride service. Adopting this resolution approves the reimbursement agreements with both Pierce and St. Croix counties for shared ride taxi service for 2019. Both agreements include an increase of 3% over funding provided in 2018. In keeping with the shared ride theme, number five is a resolution approving the shared ride taxi grant application to the State of Wisconsin Department of Transportation for operating assistance for the year 2019. Adopting the resolution will authorize an application to the State of Wisconsin for operating assistance grant funds from the Wisconsin Department of Transportation. Number six, resolution approving rideshare taxi grant application to the State of Wisconsin for transportation for capital assistance for the year 2019. Adopting this resolution will authorize an application to the State of Wisconsin for capital assistance grant funds from the Department, Wisconsin Department of Transportation. Number seven is a resolution requesting application for exemption from the county library tax. Adopting the resolution will approve applying for an exemption from the county library tax for properties in the city of River Falls. This exemption is allowed if the local tax contribution is higher than the amount that would be calculated by the county. Does anyone want to pull anything? Wow, okay. Hearing none, I'll accept a motion on the consent agenda.
Mr. Council President, I'd like to move for approval of consent agenda items four, five, six, and seven.
Second. All right, we have a first and a second, any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Move on to the administrator's report. Scott, do you, would you like to give us any updates or highlights?
Sure, while you're thinking of your question, Monday, October 15th to Saturday, October 20th is the fall cleanup. It'll be held at the Public Works Garage at 950 Benson Street. The hours are Monday through Friday, four to eight, so in the evenings, Monday through Friday, and then on Saturday from eight to one. So it's time to start lining up your friends who own pickup trucks at this point. October 30th is a joint public hearing for the Connect Connect Cooperative Boundary Agreement. That will be at the River Falls Public Library at 6:30 PM. That is a joint hearing between the city and the town board to gather public comments on the proposed cooperative plan. Elections, in-person absentee voting begins on Monday, October 22nd and runs through the Friday, November 2nd. There is not absentee voting, in-person absentee on the Monday before the law- There is not absentee voting, in-person absentee on the Monday before elections. Clerk's office has extended hours at City Hall for this two-week period to accommodate voters and will be available from seven A.M. to six P.M. And that will be at City Hall. The November sixth election, voters from District One, Ward Five, who previously voted at the City Hall, will move to the library's main level. And voters from District One, Wards One through Four and Fifteen will move to the lower level of the library, but stay at the same building. Voters from District Three, Ward Six through Eight, those that were voting at the Hoffman Park Storm Shelter, will vote at City Hall. If you have any questions at all about changes to voting or any questions about registration or when you can vote or how you can vote or what eligibility is required, you're more than, more than welcome to give us a call at four two five oh nine hundred. There also is a helpful website, www.myvote, M-Y-V-O-T-E dot W-I dot gov, that also can provide information. Reminder to residents that if they do have the ambition and the skill, that they can help us by raking leaves off the catch basins. It's a particular problem at this time of year combined with the weather. We're getting a lot of leaf drop and we simply cannot keep up with it with the city crews. So we'll obviously be trying to control any flooding on the roads, which we've, at this point, not had much, but residents can help us out by just raking the leaves in the, that are in catch, covering catch basins and just place those in the boulevard where we hope they'll dry out and then you'll bring them to the compost site later. October thirteen is the UWRF homecoming. There is, there is a parade on downtown, just to remind folks that around ten thirty A.M. on October thirteenth, there is a short parade on Main Street that all are welcome to attend. With that, there's a number of things covered in the administrators' report, including a park that by now is, I'm sure, very muddy with the new dog park, but that seems to be going off all right. We're getting lots of suggestions from, from residents about maintenance items and other things that we can help out with. So again, that was a, we opened up kind of ahead of the spring to try to give us a little time to learn and give folks a chance to use that through the next few months. And we're kind of making our list for things in the spring and we've heard that there's some friends, informal friends groups and others that are starting to make their list too, hopefully with donations attached. So we're looking forward to working with folks on that. There'll be some tree planting going on around the community in the fall here, so you'll see, notice some of that. When it's not raining, we're trying to catch up on some trail maintenance and other things that we weren't able to do because we were mowing so much this year, but things are coming along pretty well. And we'll notice some activity out at Glen Park. A lot of the other major projects are identified in there and including the, we've ended our discussions with the state for State twenty-nine thirty-five County Highway F.F. We've considered it no longer productive to continue discussions with the state. They, they are not, not able or interested to come around to our way of seeing and at this point, we think it's probably not good use of our time or resources to try to change that. So I understand there might be some frustration on the part of people, but there'll be a project out there to improve some safety and some turning movements at the two intersections on the end, each end of that twenty-nine thirty-five from Double F up to Cemetery. But the state is, I think refuses probably the right word. They refuse to pursue the option that we prefer, which is the roundabout, which would be a lot safer and, and more effective in the long term. So, any questions?
Well, I've got a question about, about that. It says in your report that the DOT would indicate that they'd lose the Hисп grant slated for payment to improvement, number one, if they improved number two, which was the roundabout. How much is the grant? How much would they lose?
I think they would lose about eight hundred thousand. So I mean, they're, they suggested to us that if we wanted to pursue the roundabout option, they would give us eighty-five thousand dollars or something about that range.
How generous of them.
So that's the state portion of that project and the Hисп funding, we don't believe that they actually will lose the funding, but it's an internal allocation by the state under their policy. So the region would lose it, so to speak, based on their own internal policy.
It appears to be a internal rule regarding losing the money. The feds will not take it back. If we did a roundabout and doubled the accident reduction, the feds would not take the money back. It's the state making their own rules and saying, we can't participate in a roundabout, even if you pay for it, city, because we don't feel the accident reduction is worth it. It's rather silly, but. We will probably be discussing this one more time as far as an option, you know, on that front. Again, the accident reduction from the state's own report would almost be double by doing a roundabout. That's significant. So I think that's the focus there. Forget about medians and beautification, but, but just the accident reduction is double is, is a significant item.
Well, whichever way this ends up going, what was the timing on the intersection then?
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one, okay.
That's almost unbelievable. All right. The only other thing I saw in here, which I found very interesting, was under facilities that the fire department, we were also doing vermin maintenance, which I thought that was pretty good. Nice way of putting it. Anybody else have anything for administrator?
I just have a question on the fall cleanup. Are we bringing back into, I didn't see anything for electronics. Is that something that we're going to be doing here in the future?
Yeah, the electronics is not at this event, although you can bring it for a fee, correct?
Correct. Next year, we will be bringing back one electronics recycling event per year, starting in twenty nineteen.
One free.
We have not scheduled that yet.
One free electronics event annually.
Correct.
You can, you can recycle electronics for a fee year-round, either by calling, advance disposal, or it's fee disposal is available at these two, the two cleanups, but don't bring us a trailer load of fifty-inch nineteen eighty projection televisions. That will be, you can bring them, but bring your checkbook also.
Yeah.
So are we looking at adding just a small dollar, two-dollar fee to the utility bill? I thought I saw something on that a while back.
Yep, yes, you guys proved that here a couple weeks ago, a dollar twenty-five starting January one.
Right.
And that will be for the compost site, spring and fall cleanup, and electronic recycling for all customers of River Falls Municipal Utilities.
And that'll guarantee our utility collection every year?
Yes, that's, we calculated that the dollar twenty-five was enough to sustain those four programs.
Fantastic, thank you.
I just wanted to say real quick that Arbor Place had their official opening this last week and I was fortunate to be a guest there. And what they do for the community is they offer services for alcohol and other drug abuse counseling, AODA. And I had just encouraged people to go down there and just meet with them. It's a real gift to a community to have good counseling services.
Okay, next on the agenda is mayor's appointments. The mayor has asked us to look favorably upon the appointment of Jeff Bjork to the Historic Preservation Commission.
Move approval of the mayor's appointment.
Second.
All right, we have a first and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, Mr. Bjork is appointed. Next, we'll move into closed session. We will recess into closed session per Wisconsin State statute for the following purposes, nineteen point eight five one E, deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public properties, the investment of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session to wit purchase of property for longtime library facility needs. We need a motion, oh no, we need a roll call. Oh, we need a motion, we need a motion.
Mr. Council President, I move that we recess into closed session.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, a first and a second. Now we need a roll call.
Watson.
Yes.
Page.
Yes.
Biersted.
Yes.
Morset.
Yes.
Gagne.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Odine.
Yes.
All right, we're in closed session.